Hello here. You're good. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the City of Lakefront Park City Council Work Session for Thursday, September twelfth, uh, twenty twenty four, and with that I will entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying hi.
Hi.
All right, thank you, everybody. Tonight we have a couple topics, um. But I do want to say that because we have two colleagues that are unable to be here for the work session and they're the ones presenting, but we should probably have a, um, make an amendment so to the, uh, agenda and remove. Item C.
Councilmember Golden, thank you, so.
She'll leave it and we'll see what happens.
Yeah, we'll let it be.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Health, appreciate that. Okay, so we have three items on the agenda tonight, the police pursuit policy and two other items, and we'll start off with fleet, police pursuit. This Chief Harden, welcome.
Do you mind if I sit next?
Absolutely not. We started to say absolutely. I came out long. I was like slide over.
Okay, so good evening, everyone. So tonight I'm gonna have a brief presentation on vehicle pursuits. I'm gonna focus on uh, two primary sections, state law and city policy. So, um, in twenty twenty one, you wanna pop over there? It works. So in twenty twenty one, the legislature passed House Bill ten fifty four, taking effect July twenty fifth, twenty twenty one. The law limited police to engaging in a pursuit to probable cause to arrest a person in the vehicle for committing a specific violent crime or sex offense such as murder, kidnapping, drive-by shooting, or rape. It also added supervisor must authorize before going into pursuit. In other words, it was extremely limiting because of the probable cause, the specific crimes, and the must authorize. The first fix was in May, uh, May third, twenty twenty three, is it changed the probable cause back to reasonable suspicion? And then allowed pursuits, it allowed for pursuits for assault three domestic violence, assault four domestic violence, but it kept the same specific crimes. And it also changed the wording of imminent threat requirement to serious risk of harm and changed the supervisor approval provision to supervisor notification. Then in twenty twenty three, unintended consequences of these laws continued and a statewide citizen ballot initiative was introduced, Initiative Two One One Three. So on June fifth, twenty twenty four, instead of going to the voters, the legislature passed this measure. This initiative was supported by the Senate with a thirty-six to eleven vote and the House with a vote of seventy-seven to twenty. I just wanted to point that out because for several years, this, this law of vehicle pursuits went back and forth with a lot of heated contention between Democrats and Republicans, between community members and the police, and like just a lot of different going back and forth. Uh, when it finally got to this initiative, there was a huge amount of support from both sides, and so I wanted to point that out, but we get the vote of on both sides of the House and the Senate. The Initiative Two One One Three expanded authorization to allow pursuits with reasonable sus- suspicion. A person has violated the law, no specific crimes. So again, and as always, additional factors are required. I can go into those, but they also wanna know, or I wanna know, that agencies may have more restrictive policies if they choose. The statutory changes did not require agencies to adjust their policies. So I want you to understand that our LFPD pursuit policy is fourteen pages long. Uh, there are several subsections, but most of the policy that we have is still intact dating back over a decade with just minor changes over the years. And our policy has always been more restrictive in case, uh, than state law. So just really quickly, some of those subsections, officer responsibilities, when to initiate, when to terminate, personal factors, vehicles and motorcycles, primary and secondary responsibilities, driving, tailing, air support, supervisor responsibilities, communications jurisdictions, interventions and prevention techniques, reporting and training. There's a lot of information in there that we consider when we're doing vehicle pursuits. So my main focus, um, because I'm not gonna go into all these different small changes that went through, my main focus is gonna be on when to initiate a pursuit and supervisor language. So prior to twenty fifteen, re- it was reasonable suspicion. I don't think anybody here has a question on what reasonable suspicion of probable cause, because we really beat that up over the last few years and understanding what level that is. Um, if anybody does have a question, I can, I can answer it in a pretty simple way. Uh, but reasonable suspicion, and you had to have a homicide, a bark felony DUI. And I'll explain bark in a moment. Um, and then prior to twenty fifteen, it was a supervisor was notified and monitored. In twenty fifteen, we policy-wise changed within the department um, to reasonable suspicious and then got rid of the homicide bark DUI and went to just seriousness of the crime, still maintain the notified and monitored, uh, with supervisor. Um, the actual policy says author, officers are authorized to initiate a pursuit when it is reasonable to believe that a suspect is attempting to evade arrest or detention by fleeing in a vehicle. Pretty simple. And that's, that's the general feel of the community is you run for the police, they're gonna go chase you. That's not necessarily the truth, because there is policies and we don't chase people for just anything. There was a lot of different factors that play into it. And in our policy was, uh, some of the fault, the factors shall be considered as seriousness of the crime. Um, its relationship to community safety, reasonable grounds. But the bark that I wanna point out here in our policy was homicide, rape, armed robbery, arson, bombing of an occupied building, kidnapping, assault with a deadly weapon, burglary with a firearm, or when an officer has reasonable grounds that believe that driver is impaired um, with intoxication or drugs. So what is a bark felony? These, this is an acronym that officers have used for decades to remember the crimes for a pursuit. So burglary, B, uh, assault, arson, robbery, rape, and kidnapping. And so if you had any of those, it was pretty easy to say I'm gonna go pursue and then DUI. So, and then, uh, our super note supervisor notification was actually a little more stringent. It was, uh, it's a policy of this department that supervisor and management control be exercised over all vehicle pursuits involving officers from this department, the supervisor of the off- officer initiating the pursuit, if unavailable, the senior officer. When they made this change in twenty-one, what we're gonna come up with, um, they made this way more difficult even for a, a size of our city. So in twenty fifteen to twenty twenty one, uh, it was changed back uh, on a fix to reasonable suspicion and then, um, I already talked about that, the bottom part, right? So now we're gonna go to twenty-one, when things changed, probable cause. So now it's changed to probable cause, and it was specific violent offenses. You almost needed like a little cheat sheet for an officer to try and figure out which one is the violent offense you can go after. And then a sex offense defined in the listed RCW or escape. Uh, and then obviously reasonable suspicion with DUI, reasonable suspicion with DUI has never changed, it's always been that way and it continues to this day. So that's pretty easy one to understand. Then they did a supervisor change, cannot do a pursuit in any of these circumstances without supervisor authorization first. So in practicality, that basically means that it's almost impossible to pursue. So you take the fact that you need a probable cause, very high standard, then you take a specific violent offense, very rarely does that happen. And then you have, um, a supervisor must say it's okay. So just on practical terms, I'm an officer, I see something that I'm gonna go pursue. I have to say, can I pursue this? And I have to get the authorization before I can actually do it. What has changed before and now is notification. I am going in pursuit, supervisor, I'm in pursuit. Then they go through all the checklists of, okay, what do you have? So there isn't this delay that you have to let it go until you get authorization to go after somebody. And in a ci- city of our size, sometimes there's not a sergeant on, and they wanted a sergeant on duty. Well, sometimes that's gonna be an acting sergeant or an officer in charge, and the wording got a little goofy there. So now, um, what has changed in twenty twenty-four in July, it went back to, and with the, uh, the initiative, it went back to reasonable suspicion, and then our policy, I changed it back to prior to uh, twenty fifteen, going back to the homicide barred DUIs. So what our current policy now states is officers are not authorized to initiate a pursuit unless the following criteria exists, and it does have the RCW of ten on one sixteen zero six zero. When a reasonable, when reasonable suspicion exists to believe that a person committed or attempted to commit or intends to commit a life endangering crime such as homicide, rape, robbery, arson, or bombing of an occupied vehicle, kidnapping, felony assault, burglary, or when the officer has reasonable suspicion to believe that the driver is impaired by toxins or drugs. But that translates to, to the pretty layman officer is, okay, homicide, bark, and DUI, that's what I can go after, and I can pursue that. Now, I'll get into this in a little bit, but there's a lot of factors involved with it. That's just the way to easily look at it. Then supervisor notified and monitor is within our policy, it still says that. But I still have introduced, so basically to summarize, we have changed back to prior twenty fifteen language with some twenty-one and twenty-three language that's in there. So it's kind of a little bit of a mix to keep this, um, uh, under the law, but also very restrictive. So our policy states uh, cover state law, but it's more restrictive. Uh, so next slide here is basically where I can answer questions if you would like. I have two more slides after that, this, if you want to talk about it. I'm, um, contingent, but it's basically intervention techniques that we use. And then what are these factors that I've talked about several times for pursuing? Before, during, and when we need to terminate. Um, so you get a better picture of, we just don't go after everybody for anything at any time, and that's what's going on. There may be a time where we're gonna pursue, and we have to terminate it because this, this factor, this factor, and so forth. Um, so does anybody have any questions right off the bat?
Can, can you please address the GPS thing?
So.
That's bad.
Chaser.
Uh, yeah, the car chaser.
Yes, oh.
You missed that part, yeah.
If you can go back to that slide perfect. A brief pursuit for the purpose of deploying a GPS, uh,
Right.
tracking tag. Um, so the one exception that we added to our policy is to allow for this system, which is an intervention device called Star Chase. Um, so when officers read this, what they have to do is have extrinsic circumstances and they have to have probable cause. So it's still that high standard, but they can go for any violation of the law, but they have to have that probable cause. And it's just a brief period of time where they can shoot a device.
Yeah, I know that. I remember the device. I just was wondering how it fit back, have been into the policy because I thought we were in part using it because the pursuit policy was restrictive.
Yes, so, uh, during the restrictive part, they wanted to push intervention techniques and different things that you can use without having to get into pursuits. And Star Chase is one of those devices that was, uh, talked about, so and started to be implemented. Um, what this does is it allows for an officer to basically attach a device that says this is where the car is going, and then they terminate the pursuit, and then they do a trailing or follow where the vehicle is, and then safely um, try and intervene at the time where it stops.
I do remember it. I just was trying to figure out that's, so that's still in our policy, even though it was originally.
It was never in our policy. It was something that we were looking at until this new law went in effect, and then we added Star Chase.
Okay.
We added this line, because if you don't have this exception, then officers are in a really weird spot where they could have, uh, they're not able to actually attach the device without, um, having this.
Right, yes, without policy.
So this policy allows for that little bit of leniency to go, okay, here's an example. Um, we really don't wanna chase after stolen cars. And that's not in our policy to cha- chase after stolen cars, but that's one of the biggest issues that came out of all of this. So allowing Star Chase is, okay, I got a stolen car. You have probable cause at that time as an officer, because you can run the plate, dispatch comes back with, this is a stolen vehicle, you've established probable cause, it's pretty simple, it's in front of you. Now they can briefly go into a pursuit to establish the, uh, GPS device. Then they terminate, and then we can recover that vehicle wherever the device is found. So now we don't have this long extended pursuit where people's lives could be in danger and our officers' lives.
Thank you. You clarified it, because I remember the previous presentation of the device.
Yes.
Yeah, so now this is the policy connected to the device, yeah.
I'll value that. PD colleagues, ca- questions, uh, of Chief Harden on the pursuit policy? It's a, it's been quite an evolution for a number of years, uh, almost nine years now.
Yeah.
So, there's a lot, there are a lot of questions I'm sure you might have processing. We need to bring this back for just, you know.
If you wanna, if you wanna go in, I can just briefly show you these two slides real quick. So intervention devices. The things that officers do is blocking in, boxing in, PIT is authorized, but you can only do it if you're trained, and we have one officer in the department that's training, or a EVAC instructor. But it also takes equipment around our vehicle, so we're not actually doing PIT, because we need to buy um, these specific bumpers that go around the car. But if you've ever seen it on TV, it's an officer that's behind a car and pushes a car to stop it kind of in a spinning motion. And it's been going on since the eighties, that officers have used this, uh, technique. Ramming, roadblocks, tire deflation devices, we've been using the last several years, which are stop sticks. Um, there's little devices you can stick behind a tire when you make contact, and when they roll over it, it, uh, pops their tires. And then we've got piranhas that are very similar to that, but they're just bigger devices that they can drop down and it rolls right in front of the car. And it stops vehicles from fleeing. So it's like more of an intervention of trying to stop it before it happens. And then trailing these two items here, Star Chase, we've, uh, talked about, thank you, council member, and then drone UAVs that we're looking at, uh, building into. This could be something we could throw a drone and follow a car to a safe spot as opposed to actually doing the vehicle pursuit and, um, having that extra chance of somebody getting hurt. So, um, and it's more effective than, or more cost effective than a helicopter. And then if you wanna move on, these are a lot of factors that officers look at. The, the factors for starting a pursuit or during a pursuit, they're looking at the seriousness of the, uh, crime, the relationship to the community, um, the safety of the public with like the time of day, the amount of vehicle traffic, the pedestrian traffic, school zones, the speeds, the pursuing officers familiarity, familiarity of the area, uh, the quality of rating, uh, radio, uh, driving capabilities of the officer, weather, traffic, road conditions, identif- identity of the suspect, performance of the vehicle. Uh, if it's an unmarked vehicle, there's reduced visibility, vehicle speed, it could be a hundred twenty miles an hour, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense in our city. But I mean, you get up to those speeds, that makes, that's a clear, you do not, um, you know, pursue. Other persons in, that are in the vehicles, there's, we could have a ride along, a person that's riding with the officers. There could be a hostage situation where you've got a five-year-old kid in the car. So all these different, the availability of resources, um. There's all these factors that go into the officer's mind of, are we gonna, and the supervisor's mind, are we gonna be pursuing this or not? And then termination, uh, did they get too far away? Did we lose the, the view of what they were doing? Um, and it's too futile to try and, uh, continue. The vehicle's location is no longer definitely known. There's damage or mechanical failure to the police cars or somebody else's car. Um, emergency lights aren't working or something's inoperable. There's hazards to, uh, a bystander and we need to stop for them. So there's a lot of other, uh, uh, factors that play into this. So it's not just a simple, I've got this burglary or robbery that just happened, I'm gonna go chase that car. All these things are going through the minds of the officer and the supervisors. Um, so I, I wanted to quickly get through that for you. Um, if you have any questions.
Yes, we're bold. Yeah, apologies if you already talked about this. What happens if a pursuit originates in another city or starts here and then moves into another city?
Okay, so which one do you want? The one that originates in another city? You are, okay. So I did, I didn't really talk about it earlier. I talked about it because I wanted to focus on when pursuit is initiated and then supervisor notification, because that was specific to the big parts of the law, but I briefly went over like around twelve to fourteen different subsections of our policy. It's fourteen-page document. And in that section talks about jurisdictions and what we do. So if a jurisdiction is asking for help from us, we usually do intervention device. So Bothell, this happens quite a bit, Bothell have a pursuit, they're driving through our city, we'll have stop sticks out for them because of their request. So we're helping them in that particular pursuit. We generally do not engage, and they've come into our city and then they pass it off, and now we've got the baton, and it's our turn to go chase. That generally does not happen unless it is a major situation. Maybe somebody was an active shooter, and now that person is killed, four or five people, they jumped in the car and they're taking off, and they're now in our city, and an off, our off, uh, Bothell or Kenmore officer, um, loses sight and we pick up site, we take off after. That might be something that is appropriate to go chase. But it's very rare that we're gonna end up in somebody else's call. Now, if it's our call and we go into another jurisdiction, that's when the supervisor says, hey, this is getting too far out of hand, but it's still got good conditions. It's three o'clock in the morning, nobody's on the road, the road is um, dry, and it's still good conditions for a pursuit, and we tell county or state patrol, and then they pick it up and they take off, they take the, um, the pursuit for us. That's happened in the past. Nowadays, I don't have the answer because of the way pursuits have happened over the last few years. That may not happen as much as it used to, or mutual aid was really easy, especially, especially state patrol, where we would have it go onto the freeway, supervisor would say, no, we're not gonna pursue anymore. State patrol would definitely go after. Things may change now because of the pursuit laws. So I don't know if I completely answered it, but that's basically the concept of it.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Also, with colleagues, other questions for Chief Harden? Mr. Vice Chair for, to illustrate that point, thanks, um, is that, uh, the, when we, when we had that incident with the RV driver, um, that was one where we continued the pursuit from Seattle or into Seattle?
Um. No. Because they crashed in Seattle. Um, and the officers originally responded to the collision of this hit and run.
Right.
And then they found out that they had, uh, crashed in Seattle. Uh, okay, so I'm, I'm trying to put all my thoughts together on that, but I'm almost positive that's what it is. It was not, um, in that, uh, pursuit situation. Um, because there was a shooting that happened, and then the person took off to get away.
Right.
There was no officer intervention at that time. Um, one last thing that I do wanna point out, unless there's any questions. Uh, I wasn't really gonna bring this up because I don't like doing math in public, like you guys said. But I, I wanna, I wanna just kind of explain how rare this is in the first place. Since twenty fourteen, we average two pursuits a year. It's a very rare occurrence. Uh, we had two in twenty fourteen, then we had zero, and then we had zero, then we had two, then we have one. It averages out, but essentially we have never had more than two pursuits a year, except for twenty twenty-two. What happened in twenty twenty-two? The law changed to be more restrictive and we had more pursuits. How is that possible? Well, let's look at it from this point of view. This is where I think it is, is you have a more restrictive law. They were still following policy and still doing the law, but more people were running and more problems occurred, and then it jacked up the numbers. So that's where, where it was an unintended consequence, which we found out with a lot of different laws that were changed. In particular juvenile law right now, where they've changed the laws and then it created a worse situation. So just to let you know, if we just took out twenty twenty-two, we averaged two a year. This is a very rare occasion that this kind of stuff happens. And I also wanted to point out, this year in twenty twenty-four, we had two pursuits so far. One of them was, um, within policy and one was not within policy. But that one that was not within policy, and they were, uh, disciplined and it was taken care of. But that one that was not within policy was within state law. But it was not within policy, so there's consequences for that. Um, so just to let you know that it's very rare that it happens, and it does get addressed when, uh, these things happen.
Colleagues, other questions for Chief Harden? Will we need to move on? We have two items. Thank you, Chief.
One last question. This is just a curiosity. So how often do we deploy those stop-the-car devices?
Uh, like stop sticks?
Yeah.
I.
A few times a year?
Yeah, yeah, easily. We've, uh, I would say about three or four times.
Yeah.
Um, uh, there's been a handful of times where we use the intervention devices, so they go up on somebody that's on drugs inside a car at the town center. They go up there and they're like, this guy's probably gonna run, because that's what the typical MO is. So they throw the device in there and then they take off, and their tires pop. Um, so that's happened a, a handful of times over the last three or four years. I would say probably ten times over the the last three or four years.
Okay, just curious, yeah.
It's not a gigantic problem, thank God, you know, not, but I even said this today at our chief's meeting, that we're a very, very small portion of this, but these laws that they change can affect us in different ways, and we saw it. So thankfully, uh, the legislature passed this initiative and hopefully things go smoothly. We need to teach the community now that you can't just run the from the police for any reason.
Yeah, the nation's off and it's back on. So, yeah, thank you, Chief.
I appreciate, uh.
Appreciate what you do.
Thanks.
Yeah, important, thank you. Uh, moving on. Director Hoffman is gonna join us right now for, uh, Resolution Twenty Four, nineteen sixty-three, authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement, consulting services with Cascadia Consulting for climate planning support. Mark, welcome.
Thank you. This is an introduction of a resolution and a proposed agreement with Cascadia, SCJ, and Fairland Pierce. A little background, Growth Management Act was modified by House Bill eleven eighty-one, I believe in the twenty twenty-three session. And then Commerce made some grant monies available on a schedule. Uh, everyone was on a, in King County, everyone was already on a schedule to update their comprehensive plan, periodic updating. And they didn't anticipate that money going very far, but it did. The city was fortunate, five hundred thousand, you've seen the inter, inter-agency agreement accepting it. Uh, and now comes implementation. Uh, as part of that, the scope of work in the grant was part of our request for qualifications that we did this summer. Uh, the, uh, city received seven uh, responsive, uh, submittals. We chose to interview four, we being House Member Kurt Tony, uh, Cory Roche and I. Uh, and of those four, it was a tough ranking, um, but Cascadia, Rosebuck, Cascadia, SCJ, and Fairland Pierce for, for, uh, specific reasons. Uh, and they became the subcommittee's recommendation. We, we negotiated a contract based on the scope. That contract is, is attached to the resolution. Uh, the recommendation is to go with Cascadia for four hundred twenty-two thousand, six hundred seventeen dollars. Uh, time is of the essence, and so we're we're hoping for action introduced here in the workshop and then talk about it in a nice second. Touch. Uh, and related items, the council's already formed the climate policy advisory team. And accepted the mayor's nominations, they're ready to go. The scope that is in your packet includes if it's acted upon, the, the consultant taking that first step with that subcommittee, and then performing that work for that amount. The difference between that contract amount and the grant amount is meant to recover some, uh, existing staff. I believe that's it, unless you have any questions.
Colleagues, questions?
Uh, what's the term of the agreement duration?
Through December of next year.
Okay. So the remainder of this year and then through December of next year.
Date of execution, and it overlaps. Com- Commerce's fiscal year ends, uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. So the deliverables have to be at Commerce by then. The major deliverables and actionable climate element, but not in the group.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Colleagues, I know Vice Chair for Tony's special, no, you, oh.
Just a general comment. Um, as, uh, as Director Hoffman pointed out, um, the seven, uh, firms that applied were very qualified. It was even hard to win it down to four. And then of the four, um, again, they were, they had all their strengths, but one of the reasons why Cascadia rose up above the others is Cascadia, Fairland Pierce, and, uh, SCJ, of course, are working on various aspects of the comp plan, who are working with us on the Lakefront Park, and so are very familiar with our community. And so being able to leverage that as it were insider knowledge, I think is a great way to save the city a bit of money, so.
Thank you, Mr. Redoni. Friends, any other questions or comments? We'll be talking about this soon. Oh, you've got him, he's smart. Thank you very much, Mr. Hoffman. And without removing time to, uh, let's see, continue discussion regarding multimodal healthy streets pilot proposal. Councilor Goldman, you, uh.
Oh. Yeah, actually, I could take the lead on this.
We can.
Um, basically, I think what we're looking for, uh, we presented this map at a previous council meeting, and there was a bit of confusion. And so what we're looking for is feedback from the rest of you. Um, what is it you'd like to see about the map? Um, what are also the general rules that we, or rules that are right, or the, the guidelines for what makes a healthy street or not, like no cul-de-sacs, not in your schools, not in your apartment buildings? Uh, do you like those rules? Are there other rules you'd like to see? Uh, one thing, I've talked to Mr. Hiller, we're gonna flip the map, so instead of coloring in the roads that are not eligible, we're gonna make it so that roads that are colored in are the ones that are eligible. We think that, we think that will be easier for everyone.
We love positive, positivity.
Um, but yeah, just to remind you, the idea is it's kind of the, the twin goals. Number one, to provide more areas where it's safer people to walk, bike, walk their dogs, play around, that sort of thing. And also to try to reduce cut-through traffic on roads that were never really designed to handle volumes of cut-through traffic. So some of the rules that we had in place were, um, no cul-de-sacs, because you can't really have cut-through. So some of the rules that we had in place were uh no cul-de-sacs because you can't really have cut through traffic on a cul-de-sac or a dead end. Uh not near businesses, schools, restaurants, apartments, because those are meant to have higher volume to begin with. It doesn't make sense to restrict those roads. Uh not on major arterials and so so it's not gonna be on Boffel Way, Ballenger Way. Uh one seventy eighth, the the roads that the state classifies as major arterial, since again, those are designed to have high volumes. So those, I think, were the kind of the three, kind of the the principal guidelines for what would not be eligible. That's what I think is color, like the yellow represents arterials, purple represents cul-de-sacs, green. Oh, and then the fourth rule was if it's kind of the only route through a neighborhood, then that's not eligible because it doesn't really make sense. Like if you look at where Horizon View is, the the road that's in green, I think that's one ninety seventh. That's really the only sensible way to be driving through the ride Horizon View neighborhood, so it doesn't make sense to restrict that road. So those were kind of the guidelines for what knocks you out being a healthy street. But we're open for feedback. Are there any of those rules you don't like? Are there other rules you'd like to see in? I think the idea is that Administrator Hill's gonna take council guidance and then have a consultant build a positive map. That we can act on at a future council meeting. Is that accurate?
Yeah, we'll take this to transport and then do a GIS layer. It's all the other data that collected for us over the years.
And of course, I'd be remiss if I didn't um give thanks to Chief Harden and Director Perrigo because they also putting quite a bit of time on devising these rules. For what goes into a healthy street. And also Councilmember Riddle who's not here now.
Mr. Holden, yeah, I just to follow up. At the last meeting, you know, I did hear some concern about should cul-de-sacs be, what about dead ends? And so that's why we're back is before we go out and engage a consultant, I just want to make sure the council as a whole is on the same page. We will take that direction, go forward and then bring something back to you for adoption in the future day.
I remember when we spoke about this before, that there was possibly gonna be some comparison to adjoining, to other cities that have these programs. To see if if what we're doing is similar to what they do as far as the descriptions, the types of streets that are included. And maybe I have some of their language can help us.
You think Councilmember, colleagues, questions, comments?
Example of what you would consider a healthy street, one of our streets, what example would you?
Alright, so a possible, so in theory, it's the ones rose that aren't colored, but if you were to, Matt, if you were to scroll down towards town center. Um there's the one end. May I go to this screen?
Yeah.
Um. I has worked that good, but for instance, this road here is kind of acting as if this.
Forty-four, I think it's.
Forty-four, forty-four, yeah, exactly.
If the main way to get from town center towards, from between town center and Brookside would be. One of these two, then these would be the primary routes, so they're not eligible. But forty-fourth is not really designed to be a primary way to get between town center and Brookside. So that could be a potential healthy street.
Now, could you scroll back out on, I just wanted to take a look at this diagram here where. So what is the green?
Those are my. So those one.
Yeah.
Is there arterial street collector? Okay. Anything in color, because they, that that that's why this is confusing, probably we're gonna flip it. Anything in color doesn't qualify, so we will flip.
Yeah, well, the the reason I was gonna say is, I think that the, I, we need to maybe check this again. Because the the state DOT map shows far fewer arterial collectors than what I'm seeing here, so I want to make sure we're not um.
So Councilmember Riddle did pull this from the state.
Yeah.
So but we we will have transport.
But but it doesn't mean that we can't make Perkins into our new street, I guess, so functional classification.
Oh.
Yeah, I mean, this is this, this is the end all be all. So I want to make sure we're we're on, on, on um. We're clear because colleagues, this is what we're looking at here when it comes to arterials and minor arterials. We don't have that many, but these are very specific prescribed streets that are through the community to make sure that our emergency vehicles can get access.
I believe I, I'd have to confirm with Councilmember Riddle, but I think also in green are the ones that they might not have washed off classification. But the feeling of the the subcommittee was that, yeah, this is really this, the the make, the sensible way to get through a neighborhood. And so that was would also be colored in green, I believe, but I have to confirm with with her.
That's the way it looks looking at yours, looking at that one.
Yeah, it's everybody.
Uh Councilmember Goldman, um so just to clarify, what we would do next steps is we would publish this now. Reverse version map to show eligibility. And then we would publicize the availability of this program to the community. And then if the residents of a particular street or street segment wanted to apply, we, and they had, what was it, seventy percent? Then they would do that, but um in other words, it's an, it's an option now for people. And we would publicize that option so people could think about it. Is that what you're envisioning?
It is, um and it's very much along the lines of what the traffic calming group currently does. So that if there are residents along the street that are concerned and they're thinking speed bump, for instance.
Right.
Now, I think the traffic calming group would have the discretion to say, well, you know, you've reported there's an issue. The data says there's an issue. Let's figure out the right tool to address this. Maybe it is speed bumps. Maybe it is one of those flashing speed camera signs. Maybe it's making it a healthy street.
I see.
The idea is that when the community says, we think this road is problematic, they would give the traffic calming group another tool to try to solve that problem.
Great, but but and then uh how in publicizing this map and the opportunity, would we? Publicize that periodically? Have you thought about the outreach component of it?
Um I have a bit. I could definitely see um when we did the locking mailbox program, that was in its newsletter. I could see maybe a a blurb about this in a the city newsletter and definitely putting it on the traffic calming website.
Right, okay.
News flashes, but I think, yeah.
Yeah.
Matt, on occasion, was back out the.
I saw that.
Box program just to try and drop out. We got people waiting for that threshold to be hit to a border, more significant. With that along, but it'd just be like anything that we do, I mean, we do the. Pat oils and races every year and we'll wash your car and so now driveway, so this would be part of that.
That makes sense. I was just curious what you had thought about. Thank you.
Vice Sir, the routine.
And at the same time, and I really do appreciate your, your, I mean, I tell some of the rebels work on this. Um we should also emphasize to the community, just because your street isn't eligible to be a healthy street. There are other measures that you can ask for, you know, to to make sure that the folks on Northeast one ninety seventh, for instance, or on Perkins Way. Basically can think of uh, you know, ways in which they could see a different kind of traffic calming measure. And the other thing, yeah, and the one last thing I wanted to mention was that uh um I love basically the fact that we're switching all this over to GIS. Because it'll make this information so much more accessible, especially if it's on a unified tool along with the other kinds of GIS information we have. So really, thanks to the staff for doing that.
Thank you.
Transfer the budget so we can hire the consultant to do it.
And there may be more money.
GoFundMe.
Yeah. Or maybe more money coming in the budget for traffic comedy, just so that you know. Colleagues, other questions, comments?
So what I'm hearing is go produce a map, bring it back, just a couple of questions.
I I just want to confirm, are other council members generally happy with the rules that we had set up for what does or doesn't qualify?
What work?
Thank you very much. Hey, well, we are at the end of our agenda. Is any there, anything else that on point?
Oh, I had a suggestion about the the police pursuit. If the, if it's changed, that maybe there should be some public outreach for that as well to make, just just so it's out there for people. Some.
Maybe newsletter or.
Newsletter.
Sure. They are masters of social media.
And there's.
Great, thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, anything else? Hey, we're, Jared will move upstairs. We see you on the other side.